The regular scheduled July meeting to order. First, I want to welcome all of our visitors and all our citizens. Thank you guys for coming out. We're opening in our normal fashion with our pledge and well, our prayer, followed by our pledge, if you would. Lead us in prayer, Mr. Walker, if you don't mind.
Oh God, we honor you, glorify you, lift up your name, and ask for an anointing over this assembly from your hand. We ask that what we say and do will bring honor and glory to you, will serve our citizens, and will lift up and encourage one another. Help us to do your business, and to do the business of our citizens, and to do so in a way that will always lift up the name of Jesus. We ask you for your ongoing hand of peace, of prosperity, of comfort, of healing, of blessing over our healthcare providers, over our emergency workers, over our municipal workers, over our citizens and families. Just ask that as we prepare also to re-enter the school year, that you would give great wisdom and discernment and protection to our school officials, our teachers, our counselors, our leaders, and our children, so that we can keep everyone safe and keep everybody protected and learning in the way that would be best. Thank you for the privilege of serving and for being your children in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A clerk is turning up the air, so she can check the roll when she came back down here. Well, turning down the area. So, we'll get approval of our minutes from the June 8 regular council meeting. So, we got two sets. So, the first, first sets of minutes will be from our regular council meeting in June. Is there a motion that we change, accept those?
Accept.
Have a motion and second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next set of minutes we have here is from the special call meeting, and make sure, if you would, sign that, did that sheet make it around, everybody? Sign that sheet saying that you was here for the special, for the special call meeting in July. Are there any changes or corrections?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have one. I just can't let that one go. And it was with the, the city attorney.
Uh-huh.
And we had some people absent. We had Mr. Larry Crawford and Dr. Paige Wiley out also. But when you look at it, we gave them a blank check. And we don't need to start writing anyone a blank check. There's no cap on it. And I can't rescind it, but they have the ability to rescind. And on the first reading, when he brought the information to us, it was only $200 an hour. So, at the next following meeting to make approval, I made the motion for $250. And he added on more, and so I made another motion for the $400. And the thing is, it wasn't a personal attack, it was the city business, which we've got to take care of the city business. So, therefore, I think as elected officials, we should put some kind of cap off of it, where money just not going out, you know, we should have some kind of idea of where we're going. Right now, I'm not saying he's not trustworthy, I'm just saying it's wide open. There's, there's no cap on it. But the body right now has, I can't do it, but the body has a, well, Robert Ruse has a, has a, has a time right now to, to reconcend and put a cap on it. It's not saying we don't want to file the lawsuit, just saying put a cap on it. But that's, that's with my colleagues, because I can't do it, because I already know. Thank you.
All right, any questions, anything on that? Is there a motion on the floor for the minutes for the regular, oh, I'm sorry, the call meeting in June? Motion to approve, or accept those minutes?
Make a motion.
I have a motion to accept, is there a second? I have a motion, is there a second to accept the minutes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carried. All right, under my report, I did talk to Mr. McKinnon. He has, he's still, Councilman Larry McKinnon is still recovering from his accident. He plans to be released from physical therapy at the end of this month, so he wanted to let me know to tell you guys, thank you for his, for all your prayers. And he plans to be back next month at our regular scheduled council meeting in August. Second, on my report, to let you guys know that we have moved back here, I asked our department heads to still, until we get some, but understanding on some things, we're still, there's, I'm still not requiring that they come. It's just more convenient for us to be over here, so we can take the social media and stuff. We get better internet reception, as well as our citizens is able to watch from Channel Two, so that's why we moved back into these, the council chambers here. Anybody that's questioning regulations for S-M-A-S, for the school system opening back up, you guys, for you guys, I let you know that I don't have that authority, and also let the citizens know that the authority right now lies with the school board, as well as the county mayor. So, when it comes to all the requirements and things like that, that's being handled on the, on the county level, as well as the school board and the state. So, if y'all have any questions, or anybody in the community is asking, you can just let them know that they have to speak with their county officials and their school board officials on school regulations and things like that. If you look, I think Ms. Sheila gave everyone a copy of these minutes from the, not minutes, meeting dates. I was just wanting to give y'all a copy of this. Some of our meetings got off, we, different days and things like that. So, I've asked all the chairman of all our boards to get back to meeting on their normal scheduled days, and that's just a copy of that. So, if you guys would like to come to that, y'all welcome to come to that. If you have any questions, you can, I can, I can answer them, Ms. Sheila can. You have a copy of all your, all of our standing committee reports. We don't have any old business. Under new business, we have Mr. Mike Miller, the executive director of Ballina Housing Authority, to discuss sidewalks and street repairs at East Side Court. Mr. Miller, you have the floor.
Detective Mayor, Council. I appreciate that you just come for just for a few minutes. I'm not going to be here too very long. What I wanted to discuss today is, and I was especially interested in getting the East Council members involved in this, is we're trying to look at the sidewalks and the street, Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, or at least in East Ballina, the sidewalks around that area, plus some of the sidewalks on Margin Street, up at Hazel Grove, at the Northside Development, and also down along the Naylor Street area. Those sidewalks have been there for a large number of years, I guess since their existence. And the City of Ballina has been an integral part of Ballina Housing Authority. Just to give you a little, just a short history, Ballina Housing Authority, its payment of being, because of the council at that time, decided they wanted to have some housing over, for some residents, clean sanitary housing for lower-income residents. They did a cooperative agreement with the federal government, the United States Department of Housing and Development, other than, a agreement was developed. Part of that agreement was the city would, HUD would go ahead and pay for all of the building, the city would have to get the land, HUD paid for the land, and then paid for all of the building and everything. The city then would commit to have those streets and everything dedicated, street sidewalks and everything dedicated to them. Any improvements to those streets and sidewalks typically, it's kind of a strange thing, technically the housing authority needs to pay the city for any type of improvement. However, the funding that I get from the, from HUD, the subsidy I get, I can't use it for that. So, I talked with Sheila, or I guess maybe a month ago, and we said, well, how can we make this thing work, because I can't afford it, and I know the city can't afford it. So, but we're looking at maybe a half million dollar project, and with all the sidewalks and repainting of the streets, et cetera. And we thought we'd like to present to the city council an opportunity, if they feel so, so fit, to maybe look at community development block grant funding. Now, I don't know what it's going to do after these, you know, after this year and next year, I don't know what's going to happen to that funding. It's been talked about, they're going to eliminate it and all of that type of thing, it hasn't been done yet. But, but it's been talked about for many years. But I'd like to see if the city would be interested in maybe looking at that as a project for them. They have to plan for, you know, it's going to be several years down the road, of course. But like to put it on the agenda, to maybe look at putting that as one of the opportunities we would have to file with, I guess, THDA, Tennessee Housing Development, and they would be the ones to eventually award it.
Right.
Sidewalks and streets are, can we apply for through that grant? I can't apply for it, because I already received funding from HUD, so, and, and I'm not allowed to, because I'm not a municipality in that sense. So, we'd like to see if we could ask the City of Ballina, maybe to put that on one of their plannings, to look at that area, and I'd like from the, on the political side, for the folk in East Ballina, to really put some pressure, to try to get that done, because you know what it looks like. Melvin, you over there by there, Carol, you been there, we're there all the time. So, if we could maybe get that on the planning board, that's all I'm asking, to maybe get that opportunity, because they really are in need. Since the 1960s, when that whole apartment was built, those sidewalks, we take this thing out, those sidewalks have not ever been improved, and there's a major need, I think, for improvement there. We're trying to do a lot of things there, we just put a new basketball court there. And I could do that, because that's within my development, within my capital fund opportunities. But I can't do anything with the streets and sidewalks, because technically they're owned by the city.
Yeah.
Now, we did go out and re-seal it, and I was hoping that I wouldn't get deemed for that on mine when I got ordered. And I, they haven't said anything to me about it, so I'm hoping that we're going to get. But we did go down and seal the, the street there at Martin Luther King, to help to look and keep it, you know, so it wouldn't have a lot of holes and all that type of thing. But we'd like for the City of Ballina, we've been good partners, Mayor, I mean, whatever you need for us to do with the housing authority, we are really willing to help the city. The city's always been a great partner to us, I mean, anything that we've asked for, you've always done. I can't complain about one thing, but I'm just asking you to put this on your agenda, maybe we can get a, a grant to go down there and improve that area. And then definitely really improve the citizenry. I think our citizens down there, from the top of the police department, they say they're, a lot of times they don't even patrol through there much anymore, because there's nothing going on. We don't have a lot of hanging around, we don't have our citizens, residents that live there, any type of activity that's not in line, if they think it's something that might happen, they're going to call. So, we feel very good about the residents that we have there. I think they want to be good citizens, and we want to make them feel like they're good citizens. And I think the City of Ballina, Ballina Housing, if we can come to some sort of opportunity for the community development block grant, or some other grant, you've got a great grant right here. So, if there's something else out there that we can get, we love to work with you to try to get it.
Well, I'll, I'll just commend you on the job you do over there, they, they do look good, you, they, the crew over there keeps it clean, the goals, and I thought when they, I saw them unloaded, and I, I told them, I said, y'all sure you're the right ones, I, you went, you went out of the way there, it was, that was all real nice, you did a good job. I don't, I don't think you have to put any pressure on us, I think that won't be a problem at all. We can look at some grant funding to do. So, I'll talk to Kathy Wade, now, the grant that he's referring to is the CBDG grant, and we usually get that every year for sewer rehab and water, things like that, some of the bigger projects that we get. And that only comes once a year, and most of the time, once we get it, it's like a year, two-year process to complete it out. We're doing one now. We can't apply for another one until that one's closed, but it's, it's multiple grant funding options out there that we maybe can look into, work on, trying to get something going. Or we could just get that, we can deed that road over there to you and let you pay cash for it, you don't have to, that'd be one. Put, put it back in your court. So, we, but I'll, but I will, I'll, I'll talk to Kathy first thing tomorrow, and we can start looking. And it's, it's not just in the housing authority, we have old sidewalks all throughout our city, and the expensive part about it is just that you have to have them all, and Mr. Watkins, we've been working on this now, the ADA accessible, and they have to be a certain thick, thickness, certain width or whatever, and handicap accessible ramps and things like that, so, and not to mention engineering, so it gets, it gets very expensive, but I don't, I don't think you, I don't think you have to put any pressure anywhere, I think everybody is in support of, of helping, helping that over there. Anybody got any, any questions, anything?
Thank you, Mike, for the work you're doing, I think it was great work.
Yeah. Well, so, I'll, I'll be in touch with Kathy first thing tomorrow, and I have her good with you, what's, y'all, you know, work together anyway. Yeah, so, we'll just keep you posted on what we can find, and if you find something that we can apply on y'all's behalf, we'll do that, no problem at all.
And the playground that we came together with at Northside, I think the kids are using that, it's really nice, and that was a wonderful project that the city did.
And I think Curtis is going to put the split rail around the courts, too, is that still the point? He asked me if he could.
Well, yeah, he said he's got the other thing, he's probably going to come in and involve.
Okay, all right, I know he asked me about that, and I told him that we're fine.
Whatever the cost is, we can do it.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have board appointments. We have about, two of these were for the Ballina Housing Authority. Mr. Miller is asking that we reappoint Ms. Judy Shaffford, and also Bishop Jesse Williams, reappoint them to the Ballina Housing Authority, and then also reappoint Mr. Ricky Bishop to the Ballina Industrial Board. Are there any questions on those appointments? Do y'all have a problem with us taking all three of them together? Is there a motion that we approve the three appointments? The two appointments to the Ballina Housing Authority and the one appointment to the Ballina Industrial Board?
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Community development, Ms. Su. I think Mr., Mr. Riley, you here to address the council?
May?
Okay, come on, we, I, I don't, you didn't sign up, but I, I figured she was here to address, so come on, yeah. Okay, yeah, yes.
I'm here on behalf of, there's a ditch behind my house, and the mayor's been over there looking at it, the city engineer's been there, and I'm having a problem with water. Now, since the engineer came, we had two rains, and both of them flooded the ditch out, and flooded my air conditioning unit. Now, it's in my house, it's coming into my house. I saw some pictures, just to show y'all what's, what's going on. That's the picture of the ditch. Now, a month ago, the mayor came by with the engineer, and he sent some guys over to clean the ditch out, they cleaned the ditch out. But to me, they just did enough to pacify me, to keep me quiet. But since then, the mayor came over again, after it flooded the first time, and it was about up to your D.D., all through the street flooded out. So, he told me you were going to have somebody come over next week. So, I moved my boat and my trailer, my dog, because they were getting flooded. And I had called Mr. Gold and Mr. Jordan to come by and look at the ditch they did. And we just came to come up with a situation of, how are we going to fix it all, who responsibility is it? Now, I'd like to know tonight that if it's the city's responsibility or mine's, because if it's mine's, I know what to do, I know how to fix it. I'm going to close it up, I'm going to fill it in. So, the water going to have to go somewhere. I don't know if the drain is stocked up. They tell me that it's supposed to accommodate the water, but it don't. I don't know what the cost would be. The engineer came by and said that trees need to be cut, the ditch needs to be cleaned out, and I also asked them about some riff wraps to put in the ditch. They said it would make the water run too fast, make it run faster. But my thing is, behind the motel, the water comes from all up there in the town, from behind the motel all the way down through my house. They put riff wraps in there, so if it going to run fast over in my house, it going to run fast up there. So, I want to know what they plan on doing, or if they plan on doing anything, until I need somebody to tell me.
You're talking about the, the big rocks and stuff?
Yeah, the riff wrap, the, the, uh...
It's still washing the ditch out.
I, I've been over to Mr. Rust's house multiple times, and he, it's, it's an issue, and I, so, I didn't know, and this been going on, this going on for years, it didn't just start a week ago, and I know he's went to multiple, to both mayor before me and everybody else. And I had Robert Stegall to come at our last utility board meeting to check his, the drains over there, to see if it, if we needed to up the size of the drains and all that. He did tell us to clean it out, and he's going, they cleaned it out, but then I will take the blame, I, Ms. Sheila, be my witness, I took Eddie over, I don't know if you saw me out there or not, this morning, and they're coming over there this week to cut some of those small trees, and that, that was my fault, I just, I, I failed to call Eddie back again and tell him to come back and cut the rest of those trees out. So, they're going to come and cut them out, like I said, I went over there to him, with him this morning. But Stegall is saying that the size, the engineer is saying that the size drain that's over there is ample enough to fit the water. Well, it's, I've watched it, and it, it don't, I mean, I've, I've, it doesn't, it don't hold all the water that comes down. So, I talked to, when he told me about his air conditioning unit, I guess, two, two, three weeks, I don't know how long it's been, okay, about a month ago, I talked to, we, Ms. Sheila talked to our insurance people about, you know, whose responsibility, if it's, if it's us to fix this unit and all this problem, they told me that it was, it was on Mr. McClellan here. So, honestly, I, I can't tell you, I'm just telling the attorney, the, I hadn't talked to Steve about this, but our insurance, the pool, they're saying we're not, we're not liable, and if he wants us to repair his unit, he has to press, I say press, file suit against us. So, I'd be the first to tell you, I don't know. I do, will, I will be, I will tell you, he has a lot of water that's coming in his backyard, and it gets up to his unit, it gets up to his house, and to answer, I can't, and I told him, and I, and to answer if it's us, if it's him, I, I, it's above me, I will say, I, I mean, maybe Mr. Maroney can shed some light, and I know Larry's, is beaming his eyes over here at me, because he got a ditch in his backyard that's doing the same thing that, that yours do. So, I'm pretty sure he wants to hear the answer to this question as well, but I, I don't, must, you tell me why we need to, because I'll be the first to say, I'm no engineer, I ain't, all I know is water's supposed to go, water don't go uphill, it go downhill, and at the foot of the hill is the back of his house, so, and I've talked to Barrett about this. Barrett has told me that it was a creek or something, and the planning commission approved it, and it shouldn't have been approved, and I don't, I don't know the history on it, I just do know that he has a problem, and I don't know how, I, I didn't, we, the city, and I took, said, I, I didn't, I failed to mention to them to go back there and cut them little small, little samples, or whatever you want to call them, things over there. I took Eddie over there this morning after our department head meeting. So, but other than that, for us fixing his unit, if his, I'm about like Mr. Rust, if it's his deal and he blocked it up, then it's fine with me, but I don't know who, I, you, Mr. Maroney, or somebody else going to have to answer this question.
Was it making a car even happen?
Well, our engineer said that it's, it's the, the, the size drain that's in there is the right size.
It's not really good.
I, I, that's what I said.
This thing like this, you know?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's the same, it's the same size, same size drain is behind Jerry's at the bottom of the ditch by Reverend William. So, it should be enough, you got two pipes, I watched, right? It's the same amount we have behind Jerry's, right by Reverend William, and that ditch is way bigger. So, with some engineering factor, we got to get down there and do it. I've been over Rust's house several times, because I'm the one who fixed his unit, every time he called. And so, something got to be dug out to make the water go down at a certain slope. It's going to have to be engineered. And I don't know if we can do it, but somebody going to have to be able, you know, to get in there with the right equipment, techs to get in there. And then you got a couple of trees that look like the root.
Over a certain amount of years.
Yeah. The tree is about, they, they about like that some, and it's in there, some look bigger than the, so when I took Eddie over there this morning, they, they cleaned it, they cleaned it out for us, the guys went over there and just took like brush, trash, and all that stuff out. But I, I told Rust of what I would do, would put, get them to cut down that other stuff with the dozer and all that, and, but the root is what's holding the bank up there, so, once, the more you put down there, it's going to wash, it's, it's washing away now over time, it's just, I don't know how big the ditch was 10 years ago, but I, you can tell that the ditch is being washed away. But I, the force, when I got ready to say, I don't have the authority to say, hey, we're going to fix this ditch without somebody, for this, this body, or somebody else coming in and say how we fix it, and where we go from. I just say, we need to make sure whatever our actions is, is correct, because like I said, I know I got a council person over there that got a ditch, and there's a whole lot of others, and I, and you need to help me answer this question, because there's multiple ditches around town that's on private property, and I don't, who's responsible for the water once it, once it drains and it goes, where, where do we lose, where does the liability go from there?
Well, you got the law and the facts, so the, the facts are going to depend on each particular piece of property as to whether, you know, and it may require an engineer or somebody smarter than me to look at that. I can tell you the law generally, the law generally is that you, the city cannot perform work on private property, including the cleanup of ditches that are located on private property. But how that applies, I don't know this gentleman's property, how that applies to the other properties you're talking about, I don't know, the answer to that. So, but as a general rule, the city is prohibited from cleaning out ditches on private property. I just don't know where, how this particular ditch lays.
So, who's, so you're saying the property owner is responsible for it?
So, is that, is that his, is that your property?
Yeah, and that's, here's my next question, if that's his property, and when he go out here and fill this up with concrete, and that water go somewhere else, who, is that his problem or our problem? Yeah, but that's, and I want to know myself.
Well, if he does some, you get into a separate issue, the, the general rule is that if anyone, it just wouldn't matter if it were to come out the city, or if we're just talking about two, you know, neighbor and private owners that are next to each other. The general rule is that if you, if anyone impedes the natural flow of water, then whoever impeded it bears the consequence. So, if he changes the direction of the natural flow of water, and it creates a consequence for a neighboring landowner, you know, that would be a dispute between private individuals, the city wouldn't be a part of the dispute, but I can't sit here and say he wouldn't face any consequence if it, I just don't know the flow, I'm not an engineer, I don't know the, the neighborhood, but generally, if you change, if a property owner changes the natural flow of water and it impacts negatively someone else, that other person could have a cause of action against whoever changed the flow. That's just a general principle. How it applies, though, always depends on the facts of the specific case, and, you know, what the geography of your particular land is and that sort of thing. And that's where an engineer would probably have to answer, I don't know the answer to that.
Rusty, have they always, have we, I say they, have we always kept that, that drain clean?
Well, they're supposed to have, that, that's who cleans it out.
And has, well, before, I've sent the guys over there, how long it's been since it?
For a long time.
It ain't been cleaned out, though?
Well, you talked, if somebody else had done something, made their water run faster, so they put something on you.
Exactly. They put the riff wrap behind the motel.
Right, and that makes...
All the water from the motel...
Were you having a problem before that, what I'm saying? Before they put that riff wrap, were you having a problem then?
Had the same problem.
Oh, yeah, that, this, this water problem, and you can look at it and tell, it's been like a years.
Been there for a while.
So, if I, what's, so what's Stegall, is what I say, Stegall, engineer is saying that the flow, I guess what I just need to do is put, tell him, put that in a written report, because I talked to him about it, like, I, I've been over here, me and him have talked back and forth, and I talked to Stegall, and Stegall came over there, he said he was going to check it, he went there and that he came, called me back and told me that our end was clear. I just, I would, I would like us to have this, and it, because this, I know we're dealing with Mr. Rust here now, but this is a problem all over the city, and I, I can tell you four or five, right off top, this house is about to fall over in a ditch, and I just, I want to know, and I, if it means you need to put that together, our engineer, that we clear on that, because my first instinct is send the guys over there and clean it out, and fix the drain, that's just my first instinct, but I don't like, so that deal over here on, at Meadow Brook and back on Country Club, they... That's just my first instinct, but I don't like, so that deal over here on, at the Meadowbrook and back on the country club day, he, he has a whole lot back there that's covered in water and the engineers, that's, I know that's a whole nother thing. But we, how do we, if this is not on us, I need that to say that, so I can tell this man, uh, and everybody else for that matter. Cause this, I wouldn't want it, somebody dropped the ball somewhere and I don't, I would not, it ain't none of us, but that, that deal. How we, I guess how do we need to fix this?
Well, if you're asking, uh, about, your engineer, I guess, is the person who has got the fact. Like I said, I can tell you what the law is generally and how the law, and then the law is applied to a particular set of facts. But it sounds like your engineer is the person who actually will be eyes on the ground to see the facts and see, you know, whether it's a city created issue or whether it's on private property. A property, and that, that would be a fact question for an expert to answer.
Okay, well, I know it ain't the answer he want though.
It's just like, now, all the water from, uh, the old Walmart, everything comes down through there. Now.
The old Walmart like on retracting supply?
No, 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 no.
Magic, okay, gotcha.
Everything comes that way, coming that way. Now, I don't understand why it's my problem. When you, all the water diverting toward mine, coming down through there. I, I've been trying to figure out what you, you know.
Direct it another way, or split it some kind of way?
Yeah, see, first of all, I don't even know if the drain is clear. The drain could be stopped up.
Well, it stopped up, it was stopped up today.
I, I mean, I know.
Well, it is, it's clear, and, um, you're talking under the road, yes, that part is clear. Now, they went, uh, to, they went over there this morning, they gone, like I said, they gone, that's one deal we just gonna have to clean. I told them we gonna just keep it clean out there every hit or rain, but from what you saying, we, cause it's on his property, but. There's a refrigerator out there.
Everything comes down through that ditch. And that shit be hot as fuck, isn't it? They need to find out some kind of way that stop the debris from coming through. I thought about take a takeoff. It got three foot pipes in there, two three foot pipes. I thought maybe you take, take two three foot pipes and put them together and make it come out to a six foot pipe and cover it up, that way the debris won't come down through. But I don't know. It's something need to be done, because like I said, the water come into my house, it messed up my floor. Now, it, it, I've been paying to get my unit taken for a few years.
Yeah, you can see the water line on you.
You see the water line on my house, on those pictures. And I know that's not sufficient. It's something need to be done.
Mr. Todd, I know you, but I don't know where his house is.
Oh, Union, um, across, you know, the Alana's daycare, right across.
Is it some kind of way, like the water, we check where it come, might be some kind of way, all that water coming through that should be split going on the other side of town or some other kind of way?
I, what I can do, and I.
I mean, you know, backtrack it up too.
I'll, uh.
It look like all of it directed.
I can tell that, I, me, Stegall didn't put, he didn't, we talked verbally, he didn't put like a presentation or nothing together to, to show, I can have them do that and show you the flow of the water and, and figure, I mean, his deal, what he told me was the pipe, that the drain that we had there was sufficient for the flow of water. Now, how he got to that, I can't tell you, but that's what he told me when we talked. Uh, and that it had to be cleaned, but even then, us cleaning that drain don't stop the water from coming downhill. It stops it, it's, it speeds up a little bit to go through the drain, but it's still, even with that drain, before this last rain, that drain was clean. Now, it didn't, it still had some of them trees and it had the riff ramp, but the drain was cleaner probably than any other man. And it's still backed, it's still backed up, so.
Too much water.
Uh, I could, that's all I'd know to do, is just get the engineer and report to put that out like that and lay it out and just say what it is and, and if we put it in writing and the reports show that and they show that we, if we're liable or who's liable, and then I let y'all decide how, cause I, I'm saying, I think we need to fix it. But I, when I talk, when we talk with the insurance and all that about his unit, that we're not responsible. So, I'm not gonna do anything or pay for anything that they tell me I ain't supposed to pay for. And then I get in trouble by it, so, uh.
What I'm saying was like, the water come, it's crossing the street two or three times. So somewhere along, maybe something else blocked up and just making it all go one way. If we backtrack, we might find, find something, you know, cause it, it like, like, just like when he was stopping up, it could be stopping up these other places, supposed to be going, and that's all just going one way. And we do have to backtrack it all the way, cross the street, that'll be us too then, when it crosses the street. When, oh, when they go up under the street, you know?
Well, as far as he's saying how far it's starting, we would have to start from where he said it's coming from the old, uh, Fred Parkmont, we might have to start from there and track it all the way. But do you think even though the city go back down there and clean out some more, do you think they still might help it or?
Nah, I had, uh, no, and I, I'm, and I, I mean, that's just me, I like I said, I'm not an engineer. It's a lot of water to come out there. Yes, sir.
He's saying it's not the city responsible, why would they put the riff ramp behind the motel?
Well, that's on the city's ro- that's our roadway, that is there, they did that to cover, protect them gas lines and stuff and we, to keep from mowing, there's just the poison and all that. Now, that, that part right there.
But now, I think you told me, I don't know if you were, you were Eddie, that putting riff raps in that ditch would make the water run faster, now don't you think coming from behind the motel gonna make it speed us coming out my way even faster? Either you putting them rocks in there?
Well, honestly, we put them rocks in there, nobody came to me, we never, we, we wasn't looking at what it was doing to any other lot down the, 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 down the flow of the water, that's, and.
But we've been knowing for the last two or three years that we had that problem. And we also knew that the water was coming from there.
Yeah.
Coming out the back of our house.
Yeah, but I, when we brought that deal with that, when they came, we fixed that. That was all fixing and cleaning up the appearance of that drain behind the hotel there. And I, it wasn't, when we talked about that, when we fixed that ditch, nobody came to me, we never discussed your, your, your ditch and how it would affect you or any other people on down the line.
Because to me, it wasn't important.
Yeah, well, now, now Rusty, I've been.
That's just the way I feel about it, I mean, it.
Okay, now, I'm in, I've been over there, I, you know, I'm just me now.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mel, I'm trying to respectfully, nothing like that. But to me, it just seemed like they put it on the back burner, it, it's not important because it's not their house. And like I said, I've been dealing with this thing, I've been fixing my unit for the last two or three years because of the water. I even had to move my dog, like how big as I hunt. I had to take my dogs to White, to my partner's house, I was so much water back there, they, and you know, it, it's a problem. And indeed it is. But I'm gonna say this, then I be done. I don't understand why if it, if it's on my property and the city got a water flow coming through, I can't do nothing about it. And if I do do something about it, I'll be liable for whatever it might. If it's on my property, I do what I wanna do with it. It's not gonna bother in the, in the, in the long of us saying I can't.
I'm not the, I agree, if it's, if I'm, like I said, I don't, I'm not, I don't know the legal aspect of it, what you can do to the flow of water, and I, I, I don't know on that part, that's why I'm asking. But now, I've, I've tried to do what I can do and I, from what he's saying, we ain't, I wasn't supposed to do that. But I, I, like I said, we, we, and I, the only reason that tree, them trees are not cut right now and that riff ramp is not put over right now, it was, that was my fault, I didn't get that to Eddie. I, Eddie was out on vacation, no excuse, I take the blame for that. But now, I've, I've spent, been over there multiple times, and, yeah, I mean, so, I, it ain't that I don't care. It is, like I said, it's not just your ditch. And it's a lot of other ones, I feel the same way about, about yours and everybody else. So, I, and you gonna see them over there cutting all them trees out, getting that old refrigerator out, all that stuff, whether it's our deal or not, uh, just, cause I know you ain't putting it in there. That refrigerator, they don't even make them like that anymore, it's just, I mean, so, it didn't just get over there two, three, that thing been there at least ten, fifteen years, if not longer, so I'm telling them to go clean it out. I care and I wanna fix it, so, but at the same time, I don't wanna do anything that's wrong on my part and illegal. So, that's why I'm saying, let me, if you okay get, let me get, uh, and Eddie and I'm gonna get over there and get that clean this week. I just talked to him when we left our department head meeting this morning. So let me get, uh, a engineer, an engineer's report, official seal report with the flow of the water. And I'll get the legal opinion, what we can and can't do, wrote out. And, cause I'm not gonna just use it for you, it's gonna be everywhere. So, like I said, I got multiple complaints about ditches like that. And it's one, like I said, a house is probably five feet from falling over in the ditch right now as we speak. But if that's our issue and it's our problem, I'm sending whoever we gotta send out to fix it. And that's for your ditch and everybody else's, but if it's not, then I just, I need that in writing from the engineer and a legal opinion, so I can show that, because I feel like you, I, me, if I'm standing where you standing, I'm blocking the thing up too. But I, I can't tell you if that's legal or illegal, I'm just telling you, I understand your frustrations behind it. And we, I'll do what I can within legal limits to fix it, I promise you.
But I supposed to continue to get that water running in my house?
Rest, I can't, I can't do that, I can't, I, I mean, I write legally, I, we got to do what's legal. I mean, that's, that's all I'm saying. And I, because like I said, let's say we go over there and I, I don't know what we do, we go over there and change out the back of your lot and fix some and change some over there. And soon as we do that, like I said, I'm just using Larry, cause he sitting right here. We're gonna have to do the same thing on his and everybody else. And if that's the case, that's fine, and I'm prepared to do all that. But before we open up that can, I wanna make sure that that's legal. And I don't wanna fix yours or change what's going on with yours. And then I go to the next person and say, but we can't do that, cause that ain't legal, we ain't supposed to be on private property. Cause if we go on yours and fix it, I don't want us to go on all of them and fix it. But if we don't go on yours and fix it, I wanna be able to tell all the other people why we didn't fix it. But so, it ain't that I don't care, I promise you that. I, I, I mean, I've, I've been over there multiple times. And like I said, I will take the blame that I didn't get, relay that message to Eddie to do that riff ramp and cut them trees down, so, uh.
How quick can we get, uh, anything started for us, the legal aspect of it and, uh, opinion from the engineer?
Well, I'll do that tomorrow, that'll be my first call tomorrow morning, I'll tell them to get it done ASAP. Um, and I, Mr. Maroney is here, so I have him, you start on that and get that to us ASAP. And soon as I get that from them, I will forward that to y'all and I'll make sure you get it too, whatever way it is. And if it's something that we can fix, I'll bring it to this board. And if we have to do a, uh, budget amendment, I'll bring it to them and present it and ask them the authority to fix it.
How long you been over there, bro?
All my life.
Okay, but it hadn't always been like that, right? So something unchanged, bring all that water's tongued in that way, some way, if we backtrack it up there, we gonna find something, cause it can't be the only, only.
How long you think it's been, uh, a issue? I know it was like that one, Barrett, was there probably about a two?
Ten years.
Ten year?
So something unchanged, that, if we back, cause, you know, like downtown, it floods in front of Amoco or whatever, you know, if something stopped up somewhere up in town, and if it stopped up and backing up there, it's, it ain't going where like it's supposed to, it's going, you know, where it can't go. And a lot of turning toward this way, so if we backtrack and map it all around town, is something else stopped up somewhere, turning all that water that way?
I, uh, Mr. Maroney, I'll get that together and I'll get Stegall to do it ASAP and get it to you. And we'll get it taken, whatever the response is, I'll get that to you and to this board and we'll go from there. That suffice?
I don't have any more to tell.
Anybody? Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Take care. Alright, um, nobody else, we have a, we have a slum here and immediately following this, uh, meeting here, so. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor say aye? Motion care.